Yeah.
Oh, really?
I just read that.
That's the same person that was kind of mixed up on before.
Yes, I know.
I should pay more attention. It's so hard to pay attention.
It is. They make medicine for that.
It tilts and lifts? Oh, that's.
Yeah, it tilts.
Yours is tilted.
The tilting I haven't tried before. This just gets better and better.
Look at that. We took that at Lake.
I love it.
What do we love? We were taking pictures and we were watching the sunset.
Don't you love when you accidentally get like.
Yeah, right. It was really good, but she wanted the picture, which is unusual. I took advantage of the fact that she wanted a picture with Dad.
Justin was showing her pictures, Michael.
Anybody else have pictures? Pictures before I see them?
I've got a ton, actually.
You? I bet you do.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Oh, I meant to put a straw in my drink and I forgot. Darn it. Exhausted. They've had kids in their buildings first. Oh, about other things, yeah. I'm with you now, yeah. Those people. Oh, man, I'm gonna miss my straw tonight. I can't believe I forgot to grab it. So much more work to open the mask every time you need a set. That spot Kenny's in was my favorite spot ever. I've sat in every chair at some point, but that one kind of hidden with my bag over there.
See, I like way over there when I'm in the corner, people couldn't see me.
Okay, friends, are we all online ready to go? All right, I have seven o'clock. Seven o'clock, let's call our meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing we need to do is approve our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Oh, everyone moved.
Everybody will second. That's right.
Do I have a second? Okay. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Section three, recognitions. And I'm not sure who I'm handing it over to, but.
Perfect timing.
Exactly the right timing.
I'll do a little bit of setup so he doesn't literally just walk in. Kind of at the end of last school year, Mike Burden reached out to the school district for a couple of things. Involved with recognitions. He was interested in doing some student recognition. He was also interested in doing some, a staff recognition. He kind of pitched what he was going for and how Sandy fit to build every two or three. We know he was talking to me about it's someone that's not just beloved within the school district, but like through all of ACT. Someone who like most people in the community know who the person is or what, you know. And that was really what stuck out to me is that, you know, Sandy not only is known within the school district and staff and over across the district, but just individually things that she's involved with. And so certainly her tenure within ACT and in education, in fact, that she was retiring seemed like a very, a very good thing. So I'll just do a little bit of setup, but that's kind of what led me to thank Sandy. And then from there, I kind of passed it off to represent Burton. That's why I'm here today and I'm gonna kind of take the role of president. My name is Mike Burton. I'm the state representative for this district, District 28. I don't know if he knows, but I know him.
Cause you were in class with friends?
I know. I literally grew up with her. She was pretty, pretty awesome to come full circle in a situation like this. Do you mind holding this for a moment? I looked you up and Googled your name and I found some pretty cool stuff. It says in small groups, the children set out to build their own beanstalks, materials, trying to make a stand-up. We're tapping into that natural curiosity. They want to explore, said Sandy Kettlecam, the head of the project lead, the way teacher. The lesson was one of the new school initiative this year in the ACT school district. An effort that brings science, technology, engineering, and math programming into schools. So I just thought was fascinating. So I had to agree to that. And if you wouldn't mind, the board wouldn't mind. Do you mind if I read this out loud?
You would welcome that. Thank you.
Sure.
Whereas the members of the Missouri House of Representatives proudly pause to recognize Sandra Lee Kettlecam, an esteemed resident of St. Louis, Missouri, who will officially retire from the ACT school district on June 30th, 2021. Whereas Sandra Kettlecam started her career substituting and then serving as the first and second grade and gifted teacher. And whereas hired by the ACT school district on August 26th, 1998, Sandra Kettlecam has played an integral role in the education of countless Missouri youngsters that got to remain in school. And whereas Sandra Kettlecam gained a miserable amount of teaching experience as an educator at Gateway Christian School for five years and the Hazelwood Jennings Raker School Districts for two, one half of years before joining the ACT school district. Whereas Sandra Kettlecam has also served the ACT school community as PLTW lead teacher and a member of the first level of the building and grounds and finance of the ACT school district and the math, science night, art and literature night, hero day, Heterage Festival, and vehicle fair committees at Maydun Primary School. Whereas Sandra Kettlecam is exceedingly proud of her affiliation with the St. Louis Metro Singers, Federal Reserve Advisory Board, International Literacy Association, ACT Education Association, ACT Parents Club, ACT Days Parade, and the ACT Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Sandra Kettlecam has been blessed with the love and support of her wonderful family, which includes her devoted husband, Jim Kettlecam, and her two sons, Trevor and Travis. Now therefore, it has been resolved that we, the members of the Missouri House of Representatives, 101st General Assembly, join in expressing our utmost appreciation to Sandra Kettlecam for her three decades of unparalleled service to the ACT school district and to the teaching professionals and wishing her the long enjoyable retirement she so richly deserves. And be it further resolved that the Chief Clerk of the Missouri House of Representatives be instructed to prepare a properly inspired populist resolution for Sandra Kettlecam. Congratulations.
For all the years I've worked here, I've had such great support from my staff, my families, my kids, and I wouldn't have done it given the work for the kids. Because that's the important part for me. It's hard to retire knowing I've still laid that behind. And I've already made some arrangements to do some extra things with my children. But just to keep my hands in there with the kids and see what I can do to help them. And he's been great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like guests to be in a picture?
That's right. Senator Beck, get on up here.
You had to do this. You've been here before.
For this picture, if you guys want to take off your masks, we certainly can.
Yeah.
All right.
We've all been shot.
So Sandy, come down one step.
I can do that.
Nope. There you go. Now I can see where it did. Yeah. All right. There you go. Here you go. Ready? One, two, three. And then for the foot behind me.
And that's my biggest.
Thank you also for the time.
Thank you. That's fun.
That's fun.
I said something for somebody and he said, oh, Travis will take care of it. No, no, not that one.
Well, it feels like that should just be the end of the evening. But we've got a whole meeting that's still going through, so. Thank you, Representative Burton, for doing that for us and for Mrs. Kettlecam, for all that you have done that we're celebrating. We're so glad to have you here with us tonight and have the chance to celebrate you in such a monumental way. So congratulations. All right. Moving on, we are on section four. That is our consent agenda. Tonight, that includes the approval of the consent agenda minutes from August 3rd meeting, dispersments, second read and adoption, policy approval, and the Accupath Laboratories Agreement. Administration recommends and I so move that the board approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can you second? Do we have any questions? Anything that needs to be moved? Any comments about any of this? Good to go? I'm just excited to have the Accupath Laboratories Agreement up there. That's the way the district is moving forward to help with some testing of students and staff when we need to. So thank you, Travis, and all team that has been involved in putting that together. That's really great development. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Section five, reports, and Dr. Broccoli will start with your report.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things here for those of you who missed it.
Do we have pictures?
I've been dunked a few times at the nine mall garden. And you'll never believe the first person that cooked again was an ACT staff. Raised a little money and also had.
He didn't announce that, by the way, at Central Office Park at nine. Otherwise it would have been more.
Well, when he told me, and I forgot about it until I saw the social media post and it was too late.
It was very disappointing.
I forgot.
And this doesn't count as your monthly bath.
I didn't want to create a scene.
Did they give a lot of money off of you that far?
I think we did okay. So, yeah, there was some small kids that couldn't get it. They left. And then I guess they got enough courage to try it again. I'll be darned if they didn't get it on back-to-back.
We raise them with grit and persistence and all those good qualities.
That's right. So did that on Sunday. And yes, it was hot on Sunday and the water did feel good. It wasn't the worst thing for us to do that. Another thing that I've been able to get back into groove of that kind of unfortunately had a lot of conflicts last school year was being part of the Chamber in Economic Development. Those coincided right with our superintendent Zoom calls. So now that that is sort of decided and we are getting kind of back into some normal routines, to be able to kind of reengage and just continue to figure out how we can help those organizations and then vice versa, just keeping up on information. And also, they're not back to being a person, but we have been, Community Improvement Association still does their Zoom. And so I do want to just mention that on the last meeting they had, a particular individual couldn't have been nicer, but said, while I have you here, my property backs up to school district and there's a little growth with some honeysuckle. Could you, could you just have somebody look at it? I don't expect anything or whatever. And so as I was going through my department meetings today, our building director got that taken care of. So, you know, those things like that, we're always happy to do. It was really literally one person, one yard, and it wasn't an issue to take care of it. And so let us mention that because those are some of the things that come out of some of those meetings. We can't do everything. We can't do everything for everybody, but certainly there are some things we can do for one person and they do appreciate it. And even though I don't believe there was any expectation that we actually do it, but they did appreciate it for true. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we have our new teacher orientation in this very area. So thanks to Dr. McGee for pitching in. He got called in for relief, like literally the night before.
Oh, no.
He wasn't scheduled to run it at eight o'clock the night before. He got called in out of the bullpen and so he ran the whole section, which of course he's done before. So appreciate him pitching in and it was seamless in regards to getting our new teachers off to a good start. And I know you guys know this, but our new teachers, I had the opportunity to talk with all of them before the new teacher orientation. So it was good to see them. I think the thing that I, what was interesting is as I met them, I met them in stages and we were doing different things in different stages. So some of them I met through Zoom because that's what was happening at that time. Some of them were in my office and we didn't have masks on. That's what we were doing at that time. Some of them met in my office and we did have masks on because that's what we were doing at that time. I can kind of place all of them on how I met them and that group we were doing at that particular time. So I thought that was interesting as well. And then today and then really tomorrow, the next day, we have lots of professional development going on in the district. So today was tipped for the most part site-based, so they kind of stayed at their school. And then tomorrow and the next day, folks will be traveling to different locations. We have a lot of virtual sessions, so some people could be in their building or even if they're traveling to another building, they'll kind of be able to just have an area where they actually plug in virtually and do a PE session. But then there are also some in-person sessions, which for the most part will be arranged at Rogersville School. A lot of our staff will be converging there for some of those sections as well. So lots of things going on over the next three days and certainly in welcoming our teachers back. We appreciate their participation and just the professional work that's going to go on over the next two days and gearing up for next year. And last but not least, you guys may have gotten a chance to watch the opening day kickoff video. We went ahead and deployed that program and tried to keep up with some of the traditions of recognizing that probably has been having individuals say a few words. So thanks to President Burford for recording a message. I too recorded a message. We heard from our HR director, Sarah Doggendorf, who used the different milestones that people are reaching this year in regards to their years of service. We had a lot of our supervisors introducing new staff, so they were able to see the picture and get them introduced. And we certainly heard from our teacher organization president said a few words as well. So thanks to all of those people taking their time to record those and put that program together. And obviously thanks to Erica too for making sure that all came together so that we could get that out. And our staff took time to watch that at nine o'clock on Monday. So they took time to do that. So with that, those were a couple of things that I wanted to make mention of. I can answer questions on anything if there's anything you want to share. I can do that too.
Anybody have any questions? Comments?
Just sorry I missed that Sunday at the Dunk Tank.
I know. Me too.
Last of days is coming.
Travis was like, yes, it is.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Beck. Moving on, we have the MSBA Monthly Board Report. We're not going to play that this evening. I think if you haven't gotten a chance to watch it yet, you know, it's always worth a watch. The three main things they touched on. They talked about the internet needs in Missouri. This is an area where I think our district is fortunate and also where we've met some need gaps. But they shared that 23% of Missouri students lack internet at home. I think that's just hard to wrap my brain around at this point. And that 84 districts report students lack physical access to broadband in Missouri. And that's just, you know, a huge number. So there was some encouragement for how school boards can come around that issue and really work on it. Then also this I was not as aware of, so DESI has allotted $50 million in grants with coronavirus relief funds that are intended to address teacher shortages and particularly in the areas of recruitment and retention. I haven't had a chance to talk with our administrators about where that might come into play for us, but I think it is a great initiative that I did not know very much about until I watched the video. And then just a reminder that the conference is November 5th through the 7th in Kansas City.
Didn't they change the substitute teacher requirements a little too? In order to get, they talked about that in that video.
I don't remember that, but it's possible. I watched the video twice, but possibly so. Is there something you wanted to comment?
No, I was just commenting. It seems it's a problem all over the state, so.
Yes, in terms of the shortages. Yes, yes. Anything else about that? Okay, and then finally moving on, we're going to spend a few minutes and Justin is going to lead our conversation tonight, talking about our book study. So as a board, and even some of our administrators right now are reading the book, The Governance Core: School Board Superintendents and Schools Working Together. It's just some professional thing that we're doing together that we're going to be touching on one meeting a month for the next few months to just sort of broaden our understanding. So I will turn it over to you, sir.
Yeah, great. Thank you. So this is chapter one. And, you know, I think in a lot of ways still had a very introductory vibe to it. So, you know, I shared some questions with you all and kind of raised some of the pieces that jumped out at me. And I think one of the things, just because of the title of the chapter, Moral Imperative and the Governance Core. And when I read the title of the chapter and read, you know, read the chapter, I just kind of kept thinking about moral imperative. Why, why did they choose that phrase? What are they trying to convey? Why couldn't they have chosen any number of other phrases that I was thinking of when I was reading this? And so I just felt like that was a good place for us to kind of get started just because that's the title of the chapter too. And we don't need to spend a ton of time because I think, you know, philosophically or, you know, intellectually or whatever, we could dive into all sorts of reasons of why they, you know, like we could really go down a rabbit hole here, but I do think it's important to kind of maybe just start there and see if, you know, how, what people's reactions were to that phrase. And frankly, I think you can also read that phrase and not have a reaction to it, certainly. So I'm just curious if anyone had a thought of why they thought they chose that particular phrase.
I think it's, when I read it, I immediately thought, oh, in this kind of view, this is truth. There's an absolute truth kind of idea that comes up in religion and some other things. And I think that was, that was how I took it. That there's, here's the truth of what we're trying to do as a board and here's how we collectively view it and we're going to use that as kind of a guiding principle moving forward.
And I kind of took it like, I think that's what that term raises and that's why it can be a term that can be really uncomfortable because it can have a lot of really strong, sometimes negative connotations. But I felt on page 18, when they sort of dove into what they were getting at, they said that a shared moral imperative, and their example was a relentless commitment to the learning of all students, no exceptions. I felt like, so moral imperative for each of us individually might be different. I mean, I think it should be. We come from a lot of different places. That's the point of having a board is we don't all, we don't all have the same sort of guiding principles in our life. But what we share is this one imperative that is about what's right for students. And that's, I think, knowing all better and better. That's what brings us all to this table. You know, this is not an easy job and it's very consuming. And the one thing that we really do share is that idea. So I don't know if they were trying to get us to be up in higher or not, but it was an interesting choice.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so, and I was just, I was reflecting on the work that we did around the early childhood discussions too, what we had, and that that was just really something that we continued to go and talk and delve through because we are passionate about making sure that we're addressing this work the right way. And so for some reason, that just kind of came to my mind as I was reading the word moral imperative.
I like that. Yeah, and that, you know, one of the things that jumped out at me is, you know, I feel like, and they made a distinction, I think, between sort of a vision and a goal and a moral imperative. And I think for me, they chose that phrase to just give it a weight that I think is sort of something that we all feel like. That's kind of like to your point, Michelle and Mike, is like the truth, there's a weight to it that's more than just a vision statement. It's more than just goals we aspire to. Like there's a real reason, you know, and I think I kind of took it as, you know, we all have our, like, some aspect of a moral reason why we're here, I think, a fundamental reason. I think that is, that was the word. Fundamental for me was kind of why I thought they chose that more than a goal or more than something that seems like a goal is sort of outside of ourselves. We can agree the goal, the goal sits out there, but a moral imperative, like we can collectively hold it, but we also have reasons, like our own fundamental reasons of why that imperative is there. And I think that's kind of what I was taking from that as well.
A follow-up thought on that? I thought it was interesting, and I'm not, you know, again, I think this is the part they got, they got me a little, got my higher up a little bit, was they defined what the shared, what the moral imperative is in their mind. And they think that all boards should abide by that universally. And that kind of, you know, that's that universe, the universal perspective can be a little dangerous when we talk about local governance. And so, you know, I don't think, I don't think we're trying to say, hey, this has to be how it is and we're going to put it to order in this box, but it just felt like that a little bit. And I can't, I don't, I've been using it on my phone. I've been trying to figure out how to match it. But I've got notes and all that, but it's, there's some interesting, really interesting quotes, good quotes in here. And then I don't want to derail your questions, but then the tie to the topic of good governance is interesting. I don't know if anybody else has had exposure to that whole world of good governance. That's been around for a long time. It's an interesting, interesting, interesting world to be in. Let's put that.
Yeah, I haven't beyond the scope of what the work that we do.
You can go into some big corporations and there will be somebody that loves that term.
Good governance, huh?
Good governance.
Yeah, and thank you for that. I think, you know, thinking about governance, right? They, you know, there is, it is the governance core. And so talking about, you know, I kind of liked the simplicity of the definition and I can't, I didn't bother to put a page number on everything else, but I didn't put it on this one. Oh, you know. But where they talked about governance as a process where direction is set, structure is established, accountability is assured. And I liked that framework. And I know, you know, looking at the rest of the book, the subsequent chapters, it's going to walk us through those different steps, right, of setting direction and having structure and accountability. I'm just wondering, just in the context of chapter one, and maybe some of us have read ahead, but just in the context of chapter one, you know, is there any, you know, how would you assess where we're starting with having, you know, that direction and that structure and that accountability?
I could talk a little bit longer.
I was going to say, and we've been on the board for a long time too. It's interesting to hear from some people who have not been on the board as well.
Somebody who hasn't spoken about that? I can tell you're smiling under there.
I always smile.
Well, as, as one of the new board members, I'll just kind of, kind of quickly maybe prime this question of just saying, when I think of those three pieces of governance, I really have noticed in my year here, like accountability seems to be really something that we've, we have worked towards and continue to do. And I think, and when I think of accountability, it's a little bit of continuous improvement, but it's a little bit of how do we present data? And I know in our financial conversations, we've tried to get to, you know, how do you boil it down? How do you have graphical representation? How do you make that very clear so there's accountability? I feel the same way with our curriculum, you know, the way we've started to structure the, the different sheets and the things that we look at to try and digest all of this information, to me, is about making it easy and accountability. So I would just kind of offer my perspective of, I'm not saying we don't have direction and we don't have structure, um, but I think that those are other things that we're working on, and I think this book will help us with that. I think I, my personal feeling is we've already really made some strides in the accountability piece of that equation, um, just in my, in my time here.
Yeah, I think that's a great, that's a good assessment.
So I don't know if anybody else has a, any feeling on that. I, I just, I think, obviously, it's something we're gonna dive into more, I mean, I think that's the rest of the book, right?
Yeah.
Well, and we're in the midst of, you know, our strategic planning and, and kind of thinking about that, and setting that direction and being a part of that, because that is our role, that's our responsibility to do that. And then do that in partnership with our administrative team and then everyone else, um, who's gonna be making it happen, really. And I think that's, you know, that's just kind of another marker.
And it's been a little, I'll just say, it's been a little jarring for some of us that have been on the board for a long time to have that shift of a bunch of new people coming in that are absorbing an awful lot. And so those, those learned, you know, those muscles that we developed over time as a board, all of a sudden, they aren't there. And that's not anybody's fault, that's not a criticism, it's just something that was, was kind of jarring for me to come to that realization. This is a really good process for us to go through.
Yeah, two, two, two responses to that. I'm, I appreciate what you said, Patricia, because I think something we said, that, you know, in our last conversation, when we were just talking about the introduction, that I appreciate, Dr. Brock, is that you're sharing this book with, you know, several on your staff, and that the administration is involved in this discussion as well. And that, that, I think, is part of what I, I just intuitively see the success down the road as we work through the book, as we actually implement what we're learning and, and like, integrating that, is that the administration's part of that conversation. And, and I, uh, I appreciate that. And then, you know, Mike, to your point, um, I'd like to think that Kenny and, and Bridget and I, bringing this beginner's mind to this conversation, right? And I think it's, it's, we ask a lot of questions, even because we haven't had that experience and we don't have that muscle memory. And that I think it does challenge those of you that have been on the board for a while to realize, oh, that's a good question. Maybe I haven't heard that question in eight years, ten years, a while, right, however many years, right? And so I think that, that, that's kind of what I think of in that, from that perspective.
And it raises questions about the structure that's established, that I think are good for us to think about. I think there's some things that are structural that we don't even realize have been put in place until all of a sudden something isn't working quite as well. And so raising the questions is good, makes us ask why we do things the way we do them.
Yeah. And then, uh, you know, page seventeen listed five major themes of good governance. Uh, you know, commitment to good governance, a shared moral, shared moral imperative, um, having a governance mindset, having unity of purpose, and leadership from the middle, or, you know, kind of summarizing those, and then I went into some detail on those. Just wondered, did any one of these particularly jump out at anyone as, as something that resonated with them?
I think number four did for me. Um, cause I think we're all working together for one reason, as our students, and then, you know, we can reach out, and I feel comfortable reaching out to you and asking questions, and that helps me. I think number four, for me, reached out to me the most.
So what I loved about number four was that, um, it's, one of the things that struck me in the introduction was this coherence is not alignment, and then alignment is, you know, um, rational, while coherence is emotional. And so I keep coming back to that, to reach that shared depth of understanding and that common understanding that guides us. And so I, I just think that's so profound, and, and if we kind of continue to come back to that, it's not, we're aligning this and we're aligning that, because we do use that term a lot, and we have for a long time, but really coherence in that sentence struck me. And while I'm talking, I'll just say, the other one, the first one, making a commitment to good governance on page sixteen. I just underlined it, no one forces a trustee or board to govern well or poorly, the choice is entirely theirs. And so I'm proud of this board for saying we need to continue to improve that. We are looking at ourselves and, and as we talk about continuous improvement for our district, we're saying, how can we do this better too?
In that section, it said, Patricia, we are the ultimate coherence makers. And I just, that resonated with me a lot.
Can we get a shirt that says that?
We are the ultimate, only when it's true, so do we get zapped if we're not operating from there?
Anyone else? Because, you know, I think your, your comment, Patricia, really leads into my last point here, and that was the, you know, on page twenty-three, just talking about guidelines for serving on the board. And these really, I think, resonated, all of them resonated for me from the standpoint of what you just said, which is, we are striving to get better, and we are striving to have that, um, you know, that, um, you know, that, that commitment to good governance and the unity. And, um, so it was, uh, you know, no comment, I mean, if, if anyone has a comment on that specifically, on any of those, on any of those guidelines, um, I just felt like if, if there's something that we continually look at those and just assess how we're, you know, how we're personally adhering to those as we strive through this framework, I think we will just be really successful. That's kind of my take on, on that. I was glad that they kind of ended the chapter that way. So outside of my questions or anything, is there any other reactions or, or anything that I didn't touch on that resonated with anyone else?
I thought one powerful thing that they said about local government that's really different, and I had never thought about it this way, but they said that the legislative, administrative, and judicial functions all fall to one group in a school district, where everyone else, everywhere else in government, those things are divided between bodies. And that just was helpful for me to think about, why sometimes things feel so complicated. It's, it's because all of those aspects fall to our conversation. It's, it's just a unique situation for government, I think.
Yeah, it's also, and that combined with, it's also unique to have leadership from the middle.
Yeah.
That's, so those two things make this a completely different animal than anything else, really, in our society.
Yeah.
And just think about the, uh, the, sort of the public forum that the high school seniors put on for us, because they have a perception of what politics and governance and government looks like. And so they set up podiums and they set us up there to ask questions, to debate. And it's, and, and I, I know you said several times, you know, you talked about governance and how this is, this, what we do is fundamentally different than what they talk about in government class, because we are a unique mechanism, a unique monster here. And so, yeah, that jumped out at me too, Michelle. Well, thank you for your thoughts.
Yeah, thanks for leaving us. Um, and so I don't have the date in front of me, but it will not be our next meeting, but the meeting after, we'll go on to the next section. Um, and I will put out the reminder, I can't remember if that's another one where we're just doing one chapter, or if it might be one where we're combining chapters. Is there anybody who would wanna step up to lead our conversation for that one?
Is it chapter two?
I, I don't remember if it's just chapter two, or if it might be a couple, I'm sorry that I don't have that, the schedule with me. There's a few times we're talking about a couple of chapters together, but.
I think it's just chapter two.
I do too.
Yeah, the governance mindset.
So yes, that's chapter two.
I'll do it.
All right, thanks, Bridget, great, we'll look forward to it. All right, moving right along. We are at seven, no, we are not. We are at six, citizen comments linked to agenda items. Do we have any citizen comments linked to agenda items? Okay, so then we are on section seven, school improvement items, Mr. McNeil.
All right, well, seven oh one is an update on the return to Learn Plan, assuming Travis, you're gonna jump in on that?
Yep, I'll take this. One of the things that we, we got to, we had a good conversation about was the overall return to Learn the Plan. And that was approved at the last meeting, that is linked on the website, and so that's why I want to make sure everyone knows that is accessible. And, and, you know, sometimes I think people wonder, does anyone care on that? Like, and, 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 so our DESI area supervisor sent me an email and just said, heads up, one of the things I'm doing, um, in the next two weeks is looking at everybody's role design and looking at their plan. And we were given kind of minimum requirements that this needs to be in there, and this is what your supervisor or area supervisor is going to be working for. So he did, uh, send me a public email that said, great job for paying everything, and it's very understandable. So I think people actually will understand what's in your plan, and it's, it's easy to consume while having the, the good information there. So I didn't want to pass that along, always nice to know that, yes, someone did check, they probably had what the requirements were, and you thought it was, it was understandable as, as opposed to something that you'd like to cover to, to, is, is going on. So I wanted to pass that along, and then we do have our dashboard active, you know, that's, once again, we're, we're going to kind of make sure that everyone realizes what, what's going on in our schools. So we talked a lot about the community, which that's accessible, folks can keep up with what's going on in the community. But I think one of the things that is certainly different right now than where we were last year is I think we feel like we can have a great impact on the school community. So if we do certain things, we can have a very large impact on how things go at school, even if the community conditions are maybe less than ideal. So certainly we want people to know that we take those things very seriously, and we also want to make sure people realize what's, where are we at with staff, students, cross-urbanities as a complete district? And then certainly one of the new features that we didn't have to report on is just where, where are we in the county? Where are we in the state with vaccination efforts? That's also something people are paying close attention to. And so that's kind of our attempt to keep things similar to last year, so if people look at that, it won't be too big of a change for them. Also wanted to let you know, we've got that ready to go. Erica and Adam kind of took the lead of getting that created and making sure that there's data that can just naturally feed into it. And then, of course, we're gonna have to feed in information as well as we discover things that, that need to be updated. And then, um, really, the, the last thing I wanted to mention, which we kind of touched on, is just trying to provide some assistance with testing, so we know a lot of families and staff can be successful getting tested on their own, they don't necessarily need our assistance. Um, but if, if there are times when that is not possible for one reason or another, and they don't think they have any place to turn, and they feel like they need to get tested, uh, we, we are trying to put something in place where we can provide that service, as it is. So, uh, we kind of touched on that earlier, and, and so those were kind of the highlights that I just wanted to hit in regards to, um, you know, where we are, and then certainly we're looking forward to kids returning on Monday. But I didn't want to pause, just, if, if there are, if there's any questions, even if it's not something I just went over, if there's anything that is on top of mind and, and kind of kills to, to the start of school, that would be a good time for us to try to, try to address that.
Any questions for Travis?
I don't know.
I just had one simple, the, um, the saliva testing, which is fantastic, um, option, is, what's the turnaround on those? Have they stated that, I didn't get a chance to read in depth on the contract, do you want the turnaround?
It didn't say on the contract, so.
Oh, fantastic.
That's what I wanted to say, but I'm.
Non-invasive and fast.
Yeah.
Was that the same one that Wash U uses? Or, that's where I did the saliva testing.
This company is based out of New York from the contract, is what I read, so I don't, I'm not.
I think we had maybe gotten a recommendation, so an organization that had used them, or, you know, it's kind of like, if this is something you're looking into, they try to make it as easy as possible, so that, you know, you don't feel like you're taking just a whole nother thing, right? It is beyond, beyond the scope of what you're going to do, so I think that's kind of how we found out about it, got our recommendation, is something folks have had for a long time.
Well, and even them seeking out the insurance and everything, I mean, reading through it, it's, they're gonna make it really streamlined as possible, so that's great.
Excellent.
Thank you. The, the only other thing I would want to mention, just, um, obviously, we still continue to work on transportation. So we're keeping you up today, and so we definitely appreciate everyone's patience, and, uh, I think many of the people are, we, we feel that too.
Yeah.
Certainly, if we could have information out a month ago, there, we'd love to have that. It's sort of this collision of knowing you're in a tight spot, you're, you're trying to give yourself as much time as possible to hire drivers. And then beyond that, you want to make sure, if there's one more seat for a kid, we put him on the seat. So that's also what we're kind of trying to make sure, is that have we put all the students on five buses that we have for each of our buildings? That there's, if there's a way to thoroughly review, not only for accuracy, but if there's any way we can squeeze out, you know, even just one more student on the bus, that's, that's kind of what we're wanting, we're wanting to do. And like I said, I know we'll, we'll get that out as soon as we can, and, um, you know, just appreciate people realizing we're, you know, unfortunately in a similar position to last year, where we're not able to transport everyone. And at the same time, we're, we're also trying to make sure that when things are released, you know, they're as accurate as possible. That's the last thing people want, is, is to wait till the last minute, and then it comes out all wrong. So we're trying to kind of check for accuracy and make sure we can squeeze every ounce of, you know, service out of, you know, out of kind of a little bit, a little bit free, if you will. So, yeah, more information to come this week, and as soon, as soon as we can get that out, we will. Definitely appreciate everyone's, uh, everyone's patience and understanding.
Thank you. All right, that was our information on, Max, seven oh two, strategic plan updates.
Yeah, so really, the kind of the new item that we haven't really talked about yet, um, I, I think I've definitely shared with the board kind of this overview of the pillars and how that may translate into commitment statements, and then that translates in, into these one-year plans. And so we've got fourteen different plans that are in those pillars, and, and sort of our attempt to make sure that we are getting things accomplished annually. And yes, we have a five-year vision, and things that may take, in essence, longer than one year, but it sort of narrows that down to really need to hone in on what's gonna get done in a year's time that feeds into sort of this larger purpose. Um, the one thing we haven't really talked about is what does that mean for sort of school improvement plans? So at the, at the building level, we have been doing school improvement plans, the board gets to see those twice a year. And although that definitely took a turn last year, um, to kind of pause those types of things, we, we definitely didn't want that to just go dormant. And so in our quest to try to align efforts, so it really does feel like everyone is pushing in the same direction as much as possible, we try to align that so the, the buildings are talking with you about those pillars. So the pillars that are in strategic planning, they feel like they have, they own kind of a piece of that. And I tried to put some examples of what, what being some examples of things that can be in those pillars that a building might set goals around, strategies around, and try to improve with their students and their parents. So this is, this is what we do on a daily basis, we serve these students, our staff members are involved with that. And how can we feel like we're helping overall progress? And then if all the buildings feed in their efforts, can get that district to result. And so that was really what we were trying to accomplish, and so appreciate Dr. Brock, he kind of revamped his template, asked him to, to work on that and make something that was user-friendly, and that as you were looking at different plans, at least the format looks similar, so that the gout is a little similar to mine, your, your goals and strategies may be different. It's easy to read, it's easy to interpret, and we like that one page at a glance, so that, you know, one, one snapshot to sort of give a sense of what's, um, working on, and then certainly there's more detail behind that. That's what we're working, principal will work with their, their leadership teams and their staff to develop, what are those action steps that we're gonna do that we think will really impact for themselves. So that's kind of a new piece that I wanted to, to mention to you, and certainly in October, that is a target. First meeting of October is when we will circle up and you'll get a chance to, to kind of get a sense of having our school and our administrative teams explain what they, what they outlined to improve. Uh, and then the last item I wanted to mention there, I know at one of our summer meetings, when we were doing a workshop, we talked a little bit about just mission, vision, and values in the context of this process of, you know, redoing the strategic plan. And so I just wanted to put a simple comparison of, you know, what, what were things where we had in two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen? What, what were those things that, how did that sound? What were, what was the direction? And then we, we kind of, I believe it was two, two thousand fourteen, um, looked at the new, new mission and vision, and then I think a couple of years later, got core values in place. So I just wanted to put that out there for the pers- perspective of, of here's kind of where things have been, and then certainly what, what might be the aspirations of the board, what might be the direction that, um, and we don't have to decide that tonight. We're not trying to make a decision and, and say this is exactly what's gonna happen, but certainly we welcome any discussion about just thoughts. But certainly we welcome any discussion about just thoughts people have or district envisionation, what might be productive to do while we're writing the little strategic plan. Or hopefully coming to the end, I should say we're writing, we're past that level, pretty clear, we're past that level. We do want to wrap it up and there's still plenty of time to do things. So we definitely got to do more things than we need to. And at the same time, we don't want to complicate things. But.
Can I take a step back real quick and the strategic plan review, ask one quick question there? And obviously there's been a lot of work going into that. And my, my question is, I'm really curious, as you've been diving into these things and not putting you on the spot to try to answer it now, but just, I just remembered, I don't think I've actually even asked you. But on these, are you going to be able to get to a place where we can see, okay, here's the challenges or the problems you saw in the district and what we're trying to address with the action plan and the outcomes we're wanting? I mean, I'm presuming yes, that you've got that out there. It'd be curious, I'm just looking forward to seeing it. That's basically my comment.
Yeah, I think that has been the, if I would say, the casualty of COVID and strategic planning is just obviously the strategic plan is bigger than the superintendent. It has to be more inclusive than it's the superintendent coming up with 14 plans. And it's just been hard to park out the time working with cabinet members to really lock in on who is, who's going to be the leader or co-leaders of the plan? And how can I give them enough direction to tonight's point? Are there challenges we're trying to address? Or is this just something we heard through the survey process? Or how is that a challenge? It's just this is what our, our community wants us to do more of, or from our staff or our parents, this is what they want us to work on. So I do think it's going to be maybe a little bit more of what we want to work on. As opposed to, this was a favorite challenge that got thrown into a lot of input. And so I think that's, that's really a good place to be in, that it wasn't like it was a bunch of, a list of things that are wrong. People said this is absolutely wrong and it needs to, needs to get fixed now. It really was more or less, where are those improvement opportunities? And that, and that there, there's a direction that's been charted, how do we frame that up? And so certainly that I think will be, will kind of be the flavor of things in regards to, is everybody going to be able to do some of those fine details that we're going to work on? So when we look at a one-year plan, is there something that, that seems misaligned in that? Or do you, do you think that that work will push us, push us in the right direction?
No, it's good to bring this up. And I think we do need to have a session where we work together to establish some ideas or shared ideas around moral imperative and mission vision values, those sorts of things.
I think we'd enjoy it. I mean, I think we're operating from a great place. We've gotten a lot of feedback already from community people about it. So it's just planning when it makes sense to do that, whether it's a, we've talked a bit about doing a workshop. So that would be just, you know, during the meeting at the end. We've also talked about trying to schedule something at a different time. I think the trick there that we've learned with this particular board schedules is that they don't always align. So we can, you know, maybe talk about that in the days to come to work on when the right time to have the conversation is.
Yeah, and some of the tools we've used for other purposes in the district might be helpful in gathering ideas as well. Thought exchanges, I don't know if we use Miro or not as a, as a tool, but. There's some interesting asynchronous communication tools that might be helpful as we try to share information on this.
What do you think's the best way to hammer that out, Dr. Brock? Do we want to offline, just try and look at scheduling? Or do you have an idea in mind that you think might be the most coordinated way to keep moving forward with that part of the conversation?
Yeah, I think we could probably maybe sometime, you know, in a board meeting to maybe discuss what, what is the right process? So is it, is it initiated? Is it, has the board had been initiated thoughts and then triggered seeing, seeing those resident or vice versa? Is it putting something out to create a large prompt that gets, you know, gets the input flowing and then you will be that? That might be just something to talk about, where to start? Start with examples of things that could be fused or vice versa? See, see if those come from, you know, from other folks and then try and process what that's, that's. I'll look at the workshop schedule. I feel like maybe the first meeting in September, there is a workshop on a schedule, maybe finance.
Yes, that sounds true.
And one of those meetings in September, we don't have a workshop. So possibly one, one of those meetings where we don't have a workshop. We can put aside towards the end of the agenda and if we want to chat about a little bit, we can kind of get your business going.
I think it'd be really interesting to actually workshop it out, like kind of the things that we were doing tonight with the governor's board, just kind of what are some things that are we thinking of? What, what resonates with us with what we have already? Are there other examples of things that, so that we can make it our own as we're thinking about what the future looks like?
Yeah, and in the past, that exercise has actually really helped the board communicate better.
Yeah.
So people get to talk about those things that they think of with different terms that are really the same thing.
Maybe one of the things that's kind of in our current strategic plan that could be helpful for the board review at that is how we did kind of map out a page where you tried to provide just a little bit of an explanation of where you're coming from, from a limited perspective of, you know, just a little bit of a definition, but more so just a little bit of background. And so that's something that I can refresh out that I was remembering on, you know, for the whole document that appears on page that sort of gets into what we were thinking from when those things were developed. And so that might just be a good refresher for people to look at that since we voted to submit our current strategic plan. A little background instead of just launching into, here's the goals, here's the strategies, here's the pillars. We tried to go a little bit of lean into some of the, some of the things that went into why we arrived at that place we're in.
Okay, so let's look to schedule it in September and, you know, if people have additional thoughts between now and then about ways we'd like to be communicating, let's share them with each other. May I ask a question? You're, I think we're in your section still.
Yeah.
So are you envisioning then, when we do the first school improvement plans, really giving a run with this template already or?
So that's where on the day, our, you know, kind of back to school prep with school administrators at the end of July, we, this is where that will just kind of roll out to them. For some initial feedback, like thumbs down, if we can work with it, or thumbs up, yes, I think we can work with it. I think they really appreciate the alignment to where we're headed with the district strategic plan. I think that, that seems helpful to them. And then we do have some tangible things that can be plugged in there. Hence why we started to, as we're building the strategic plan, we also I think have a good sense of things that should be in there. And we started collecting information and already started working on that. So I feel they also felt like they have some direction. What would go in this section? What is it that the district values that we've got in this section? So I think that helps them, you know, feel like they're already kind of started on their foundational improvement plan. It's just a matter of making sure their staff feel, feel like these are the right things to improve and the right things to improve there. So, so yeah, I, I think that if anything, it was, it was a good fit with that alignment. So, so yeah, this is what you'll see. And then like I said, this is kind of what they'll work from when they're talking with you. And then we do have a little bit more robust template built behind this where, where that's where we'll kind of hash out what are the specific things that we'll be going to try to improve the results.
Great. I mean, this is definitely in response to things that I know we've been asking for in the last few years of my time on the board. So I really appreciate the way this is organized and the way it might allow us to really be looking at our schools more holistically rather than, well, this school told us a story about this, but then when we went to the next building, it was really about something else, which is all useful, but sometimes it is hard for us, I think, to have a broader perspective. So I appreciate that.
And it's also good that they're making some decisions about what to bring because that shows a little bit more depth behind what the thought process is rather than just responding to the template.
Mm-hmm. That's great.
All right, so that is, any other questions on that item really quick? All right, next item is seven oh three, communications program evaluation.
So as you're like, no, there's already been communicated, but you're seriously, I've one interesting metric I didn't include in any of the goals. I don't think I can this well again, but March twenty twenty to March twenty twenty one, I wrote over one point nine million words from my laptop. So, so there's a lot of wording. But we've also had more opportunities for our stakeholders to provide input into planning and feedback on teaching and learning than it's far out east anything you've ever done. So looking forward, we're actually going to be continuing the quarterly check-ins with families, staff and students. That's in addition to the engagement and satisfaction surveys we're typically doing as well, plus whatever else comes up and we need to do that one, those in. Our weekly updates to staff and to families on some dates, those continue for, for me to do, I'm doing those. And then I attached a new social media report card, just to go back, we're doing them places. Just a quick snapshot of our range of games on social media. That's where a lot of our goals are anyway. So just a fix note, Instagram, pretend it's to be our greatest for.
Interesting.
One new thing we are doing this year is we're shifting from school lessons that are in our mind to a product called ActiveTeach. So that's going to replace our website, our notifications, our classroom communication tool, as well as a refreshed and updated app for your phones, not downloaded, but an app, please do so. It, it, it feels like one more new thing for our staff. So we wanted to make sure that they also, we did a quick video and has reached about the why behind we're doing this. And three main reasons. First and foremost, the accessibility and automatic translation it offers. So if anyone has a preferred language in our student information system, it will automatically translate the app, the emails, the texts, the notifications they receive into that language. Literally, if they have a preferred language set, their phone's set for language, it will automatically translate to that language as well. And accessibility as far as the compliance is, uh, far not actually. The functionality integrates with our student information system. The other tools we were using worked-ish, but they weren't always reliable. So this has been, and it's also one half, one club that has everything happened. But we had it at before, the functionality wasn't quite what we wanted it to be. This truly is meal menu, report at excellence. The classroom communications will be on this district app as well. So it really is, everything happened in your pocket, but the tagline they use, we'll still be using emails, phone calls, texts, all the things, social media, all things we've been doing. This is just an added feature, helping our families, helping everybody's download and for it to be successful in the future as well. So last thing about ActiveTeach, Adam, just since he and I have been working with this role together, I mean, keep looking at each other, like where is the catch? It's been so easy. And their customer service has been top notch. So so far, it truly is the easiest thing we have ever used, getting it set up to update the website now, to our teachers will be doing, they'll be learning that this week or a week. So far, so many questions.
Is the app also something that students would be accessing for anything in particular or?
They certainly can. There's good information to them as well. Their teachers won't be using that particular tool. They could use that tool to communicate students, but since we introduced campus last year, that's where teachers and students will be communicating. And certainly it would be important for our parents to know.
It links the canvas directly from the app.
Yes, the app is this level of communication here. If you want to know what's happening in a student's classroom, you can have a parent access to campus. If you want to know more than that, if an official attendance agrees, you can have parent access to Tyler. So we're going to get some, here are all the levels of engagement that you can choose. But no, here's where we should be.
I just have a comment. I downloaded, downloaded over the weekend. It is so easy. And I just played with it and, but I just have to say it was amazing. It's so, super easy and very, and I'm not very good with this stuff. So I was just really impressed.
I'm personally looking forward to it. It centralizes because I have kids across three buildings. And so to centralize that to one spot outside of my emails, which end, end up kind of mushing together as a whole. So, and I did not have it over the weekend, downloaded it while you were telling me about it. Just got it.
Can even update on their phones. So if they're in a classroom and see something, they're going on, they can snap a picture and from their phone, they can update the app, the accounts, whatever they need to do, they can do that.
Looks cool. Thank you.
Absolutely. And that's about seven, seventy-five hundred words of business day. That's pretty amazing.
It's a lot of words.
It's a lot of words. That's a lot. And then when are we going to have the TikTok dance videos from the administration?
I will.
It actually looked like Dr. Daughtry perked up when that.
I reached the hundred video milestone in June.
There you go. Does that mean you're trending? Is that not a thing?
It's, it's so effective though, Dr. Brock. So, no, seriously, I, I think the ease of consuming that information and the way that you present it, I know I've said that before, but I just like your videos, so.
Yeah, shout out to Travis. And I remember when we were transitioning from Dr. to Dr. Brock, it was a joke if he has like, he did a video, so I'm not doing video. Guess what?
Here he is.
COVID got you really good. So, all right. All right, so any other questions? All right, the administration recommends that I assume that the board approved the communications program evaluation in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two comprehensive communication plan as presented. About second?
Second.
Of course. All right, so any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? And passes seven to zero. All right, so seven dot oh four, we have a policy first read for policy GB eight. Anybody want to jump in on that one?
Yeah, so a, as you guys have already seen, there's been some policy that is kind of triggered by more information or kind of different ways of looking at how Title IX is being applied or how it's envisioned, you know, some things that will ripple into, you know, K-12 schools as well as higher education. And so although you kind of got the launch of policies that kind of took center stage with how to handle things, I think now you're getting a little bit of sort of residual effect that said, okay, here's a separate policy that is definitely about more than US Title IX. But, you know, what, what is it that we might want to think about including there? And so as Dr. Daughtry and Ms. Doggord continue to get training and as they push out updates, these are some of the things that they are suggesting in some of those, those trainings and updates is, hey, if you might, if you have this particular policy, here would be some suggested updates. And so this one wasn't necessarily handed to us by MSBA, but so that's, that's why we did write through our attorneys to just say, what do these changes look like? Kind of compare that to what some other districts have done as, as a outcome of, of just getting some more guidance. So a lot of that, as you see, come from just that collaboration with attorneys and being triggered by, you know, Title IX updates and then also looking at what, what some other districts done to try. So that's really looking at.
But these are some really good changes. They, they do address some things that in a community like ours that can just kind of slip because of familiarity that can create some awkward situations. So it's really good.
Yeah, because a teacher is also a parent, is also a coach at church, is, you know, we have just so much crossover in our community.
And then just go to school with.
Right.
Yeah.
You hate that you have to be so specific, but you really do just to make sure you're protecting everyone.
Any other questions or concerns about the language? That's good. Okay, well, the administrator recommends that I assume that the board approved policy GBH staff-student relations for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Bridgette? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes seven to zero.
All right, moving on to section eight, curriculum. This is Cinnamon.
Yeah, Dr. McGee, will share any updates that we have made?
Evening, everyone. We had a number of phenomenal edits to.
I haven't been able to lately, so.
A lot of them were just simply misspellings, typos, or word key, maybe a cap across the keyboard, but all in all, cleaned those up.
And all the links were?
All the links do work.
All right.
Take these broken links.
I didn't test links today, so I couldn't have spoken to him.
We did also add a disclaimer and a couple of the documents, and we do have proprietary information on a couple of those links. So, we did add through some conversations that we do want to be transparent, but we do want to not have an open link when it is proprietary information, that we ask them to schedule an appointment and give them an email address.
And just to clarify, because I think I know what we're talking about, but that would be like an organization that we're using curriculum from where we have access to it, but we don't, we can't just give access to their purchased curriculum to whoever.
Probably the way is the.
There you go, yeah.
Right.
So, we want our parents to be able to see it if they have questions, but we can't just put it out on the internet so that anybody can have it, because it doesn't belong to us to give to everyone.
That's right.
Okay, just making sure.
Hopefully, there's actual help effects.
There you go.
All right. So, good?
Good.
So, the administration recommends an ISO move that the board approved the curriculum as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Jordan? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the, and those in, whoa, wait, all those opposed? All those abstaining? The motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, section nine, finance. Mr. Carrion.
Great. Really kind of the same two reports that we have been used to seeing. Steve, I don't know if there's anything in particular you want to add or highlight other than I just, that red line is pretty straight and it's sixty-two percent and didn't know if there was anything you just wanted to say about that, because that's, I think, the only thing that jumps out at me.
Yeah, not really a whole lot to say this month. I know we talked about that, but the last month it will be continuing conversation. Everyone's going to be a lot of, who we next month, that's three, because of our tax rate. Do our workshop everything, so I'll save the office this month.
Yeah, it sure is a different behavior in those months.
Right.
Very big offset to happen to, to cause that.
You know, it's.
We usually see a bigger dip.
So, yeah, the.
Yeah, the major.
Big difference is partially because of the release of protest attacks and when that happens. It's difficult to, to tell without going really back or into it, but that's typically the two things that happen at the end of the year, the big hit out of teachers and the release of the last portion of our protest attacks. So, we have a big increase in revenue and a big increase in expenditures. And when those fall, is why you see a dip and kind of a rage right there. Depending on when the same one kind of gets out to us, when you would, you know, see if that, that's a major, if, if that's a lot different. So, we do, I personally have another to-do list to actually go review that red line as well and extend it out through the end of the year. So, we'll, we'll take a look at that and kind of get that updated probably for our next workshop at the next meeting.
Any more information from Shrewsbury on the Kendrick?
So, I'm awaiting some information that they're supposed to send on it, but I have talked to some of the administration, they said that they anticipate that we'll see their lease going forward. And it all says the success of the project. So, we'll make sure that we have that. I'm ready to follow up with them too, with the information that I was supposed to receive and, uh, trying to, like, just kind of question with this for his art. So, I think that's good news for us.
Surprise, nice surprise.
Finally, you start dropping. Been collecting it for a long time.
Apparently, not everyone else has been book dropping.
Any other questions for Steve? That was for information.
All right, section ten, personnel. Mr. Levinson.
All right. So, we've got some, some hirings and some resignations, definitely. Some key ones to note definitely is that we have successfully found the concession stand supervisor position that has been on the list for some time now. Dr. Brock, did you have anything you want else you wanted to point out directly on that list that we brought in?
I don't think so, other than, you know, certainly, as we have found out before the pandemic, we had health room assistant was added before the pandemic. And then during the pandemic, we added another physician. And so, it's, it's good to see how we have our normal nurse positions handled with our , we have health room assistants in place too. And certainly, our instructional staff assistants. And as Jordan mentioned, kind of the concession stand supervisor is a little bit new, um, we need to pitch in and provide some assistance. And so, there could be the chance that, kind of like this person can literally handle all of the events. We may be finding some other folks who are able to either handle a different season or, you know, handle some, some events or, or seasons that this person may not necessarily be able to handle everything. So, but for right now, for the good use, if you have someone that is, is going to step in and help us get, get things off to a little bit stronger when it comes to that area. And that's something we really have had to worry too much about, but that's a good reason.
I had a question. Could you remind me who, what mentors are?
I might ask, Dr. McGee, you can talk a little bit about that. I don't know if it's new teacher mentors, is that what?
Reclaim mentors, a stipend, so.
Just about what the mentors do.
What is a mentor? Who are they?
What is a mentor? Uh, no, every year, and we submit the same stipend, uh, and comes out of our Title II funding, uh, so it's sort of the original, but a teacher that is under two years of public education as a part of their certification status, they're assigned a mentor. So, that mentor could be for two years if they're a very young teacher, or if they have one year of experience, they work for one official year. So, then we, we pay them because we train them up and strategic conversations throughout the year. And there's a, a, a schedule, if you will, of all their professional development, that the mentor is assigned to, to deliver, to.
Thank you.
Any other further questions?
So, this will be ten point oh one, staffing changes. Administration recommends an ISO move, the approval of the staffing changes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Edgar? Any further questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries seven to, uh, nothing. The next one will be ten point oh two, I believe Mr. Eggers will be removing himself for a brief moment.
Make sure you're far gone.
So, ten point oh two is the administrative, administrative assistant position at Maynor, and it appears to be a lateral move, correct me if I'm wrong. It's a one, it's a assistant one to two, which means vice to principal? Vice principal to principal, or is it backwards?
Um.
I don't know what, it's one of those.
I think it's just, you know, moving into, you know, a different, a different lead role.
Lead role, okay.
Because we did have a resignation and luckily, we didn't fill that.
Yeah, because I noticed on the other one, we are, the position is being filled, but we still have a lateral transfer.
Reorganization of responsibility.
Yep. Any questions? Administration recommends an ISO move, the approval of the staffing changes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bridgette? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained?
This one?
Motion carries six to nothing, I guess one abstained?
One.
One abstained.
Six to zero to one, I guess. That's what we say that.
Usually, it's the tie, but, you know, in, in board talk, I guess.
More examples of how we're different.
We're just, we're just different.
Just like everybody.
It's the momentum of our governance.
The momentum. All right, section eleven, citizen comments. A citizen may, um, submit or request to address us, not about board agenda items. Do we have any comments tonight? All right, thank you. Then we are moving on to, oh, did we already make it to board comments?
I know, can you believe it?
I was like, I thought, what am I missing? Wonderful. All right, section twelve, board comments. Let's begin with, uh, Mr. Edgar, are you ready? I know you just sat back down. Would you be ready to offer any board comments?
Sure, I need too much more time. Uh, like, you know, she's not here, it's pretty cool seeing, you know, Sandy Kellerman got that resolution from our state rep. That's really neat. You know, it's, uh, cool that he thought so much of her and, uh, present that to her. And, uh, what else? I guess, sorry I was quiet tonight, just didn't have a whole lot to say, but I did read the book, or I read the, yeah, but I just didn't have, yeah. I didn't quite have everything pop out at me like everybody else did. I just kind of read through it and I thought about how we work together and, you know, differences we have, but, you know, we come together on everything, well, almost everything, I guess. And, uh, sorry, I just didn't have a whole lot to input on it, so.
That's all right. I just appreciate your engagement with us on everything, Kenny. And I, I appreciate your quiet thoughtfulness in our meetings a lot of times, so no need to apologize. I felt your engagement in our conversation. Um, all right, let's jump over to Bridgette.
I'd say I had a blast tonight at Maynor. A lot of little kindergarteners getting ready to go and I just want to wish everybody a great, healthy, happy start of the first year.
Thank you. It was your first time to get to pass out ice cream as a board member, right?
It was so fun. It makes it, it makes it so fun.
It does, it does. All right, to Teresa.
Yeah, so I want to recognize that Senator Beck is here tonight, our former board member. And it was nice that you stayed for the entire meeting. He was up and leave, because you know how people do that. And, uh, and he also has served ice cream, and that is like one of the best things to do, not sugar, but, but ice cream. There you go. Uh, and I told several people, I think that's like my favorite thing, is to do the ice cream and to do the graduation, give them their diploma, like, and everything else in between, turn that to you. So, it's fantastic. I enjoyed it so much. I'm glad I was able to do that. And I think others of you are going to be there this week to give ice cream to the, to the little ones. I want to welcome new teachers to the district and, of course, welcome back our returning teachers. I'm really excited about the school year. I think we've got a lot of good things in store. And I also would like to just say how much I appreciate talking about the Governance Core and thank you for leading us in our first chapter. I appreciated you sending us questions and giving us some opportunity to think about that and discuss it. And I'm really excited that we're doing this kind of discussion. I think it's going to help us be a much better district. And thank you to all the administrators for everything that you are doing and have done to prepare for next week.
Yes.
Someone who feels the same way about next week as I do.
Can't see my smile, but I'm gonna tell you it's there. A couple of things, much like Mr. Edgar saying about Sandy Kellerman's, Kellerman Camp's recognition, and that, that's a passionate teacher in person, and, and to see that even after her retirement, and I'm fortunate enough to know that at least a couple of my kids were blessed with her education offerings. And so, kudos to her and that recognition. Thanks for staying, Doug. That's, you know, you won a trooper, won for punishment, whatever it may be, but it's always good to see you. He does, I know. Another thing, you know, the, uh, the, Erica, your, your update on, I, I wrote down the notes and then I wrote the wrong.
Communication?
Communications overview that you did, and, you know, fantastic, thank you. Phenomenal, I might even say, I'll slip that there. But some, you know, everybody always talks about there's that return of some normalcy and resemblance of normalcy, and we're ne- we're never going to get to it, but a piece of that would be that Erica is back at our meeting, taking pictures, or at least this meeting, I don't know if we flipped to you for the rest of them, but to see her taking pictures back at our meetings and presentations is such a welcome face, so welcome back. I know you missed it terribly. Um, and then also, just this last bit, I also got to do the ice cream, not as long as these lovely young women here, but it's fantastic to, to do that. And we got the kindergarteners, I believe, which is even better. Um, but to add, and especially with Mr. Beck here, just to put things in perspective, I was late because I came from the AECC's open house. And so, my twins are four now, and so, they're there registered, but, you know, I did a little bit of the math. So, the first year for everybody who was there that was held at the new building, my son was one of the first classes, and he is in eighth grade now. So, he is a teenager and, and.
Yeah.
He, we still have the shovel, yes, and the helmet somewhere in the house, and the picture. So, just, you know, I'm glad that you were here for that memory that popped into my head and you as well were in the picture. I think you were there as well. So, the three, look at the three musketeers here, you guys are. So, thank you, phenomenal.
Just, um, you know, I too, I'm just, because I kind of facilitated the conversation today about, for chapter one of our book and, and just appreciate everybody kind of reading it and taking it in. And Kenny, I appreciate your comment, but I also, you know, I think I share, Michelle and I have talked, like, I, I think this is, you know, we will get out of the chapters what we get out of the chapters, right? And so, I think as long as we're all committing to reading it, that we're going to get different things out of it and we're going to get different things out of the conversation. And so, I think, you know, as we move forward, I mean, you guys saw my notes, I mean, there were a few things where I was like, this just jumped out at me. I don't have a question for you guys, but I wanted you to know, I thought it was interesting. What did you think? I mean, that, that could be the depth of the question, right? And, and it may or may not resonate, and I think as we move forward through the conversations, I would just encourage everybody to just kind of, like, we're going to get out of these chapters what we, what jumped out at us. And I think, and it's going to be personal, and then we're going to share it and it'll be collective at some point. Um, and I think as long as we're all kind of committing to doing that, that's what this is about. And so, you know, whether it's a chapter that didn't resonate with you at all, or, or just, it, it just, it read fine and it was great, it was fine, right? I mean, that, that's legit. And I don't want, I, I, I just, I know that's, the intent of this isn't to, you know, force thoughts that we don't have or emotions that we don't share. I think it's, but the, but the real value in this is sharing those ideas and those thoughts as they do come together, because then it just, it'll, it, it may spark other things for all of us. And eventually, as we go through however many chapters that are in this thing, we'll have those opportunities and that will happen naturally. And, you know, by the time we're done with the book, it's the conversations that we have that are going to matter. And so, I, I'm just, I appreciate what you said, but I, I didn't, I honestly, it was like, I know we read it and, you know, it's not, it's not a concern, I think, from my point, that we do or don't share if we aren't feeling this particular thing. There's plenty of room and, and opportunity for conversation, so, thanks.
Yeah, I was just going to say, he needs to bring that shovel to graduations.
Yeah. It's a little faded. He, he played with it a lot, so we'll have to respray that one.
That's good. The granddaughter is going to be in that same group, so.
Wow, with mine, you have the four-year-olds?
Four-year-olds.
Was she there today?
That's fun.
She should have been.
Well, I don't know, so.
Lily would be in. But, yeah, no, it's, uh, good stuff, um, really good to see the opportunity to honor somebody again in our meetings. It's been a while since we really been able to do that, so that was, that was really good. On, on the book, I'm, I'm really excited about it, reading it and digging into these topics. And I think a whole nother aspect of this is going to be our opportunity to get to know each other better and how we think and encourage each other to be better board members. And I think that that's something that we, we, was really impossible to do in an online year. And so, this is, it's an opportunity to really interact with each other and, you know, get beyond that social interaction, really just push each other a little bit. And believe me, I need to be pushed to it, man. And it's it's just going to be really good for us. It's going to be really good, and I'm really looking forward to that. Also, I was talking to, this is anecdotal, but I was talking to an executive at a company out in San Francisco as I made it back in town this evening, and, um, he was just fraught with concern about them going back to school on Monday because he didn't feel like the plan was comprehensible, and they didn't, no, it didn't totally make, it didn't make sense, and it seemed, and so he was really, when I talked to him about what we've been doing and what our approach was, and he's, oh, that's really good. We should be doing some of that. So he's out there in the Bay Area, so, we're doing something good. So that was a good, I thought that was a good commentary on the fact that I was able to articulate what our plan was. That's a good sign there. Uh, my kids aren't, my grandkids are in the district, but my kids aren't. And I was able to articulate it to him in a way that he understood it better than his own plan. So that's a good, that's a testament to what's been going on here, so, all good stuff, and thank you, Doug, for coming. And you're not digital.
Okay, I wanted to say, um, just congratulations to all the staff that are celebrating years of service milestones. I know it's one thing to do the videos, and I'm glad we're doing this transition, but I missed being together to celebrate everyone. I think there's something about seeing them all together on the stage and thinking of them all starting at the same time. Um, and in this room, I know both Dr. Brock and Erica are part of the tenure group. I'm not sure if anyone else who's here tonight was on the list. I don't, I hope I'm not missing anyone, but, um, congratulations to both of you. It's just exciting to think about that. So that was one thing I just wanted to note. Another, we, you know, all of us have different age kids and grandkids and are experiencing different buildings as this all ramps up. So I want to say that my sixth grader got to be at Rogers this morning from eight to twelve, and I'm telling you, the energy emanating from that group of kids to all be together today, like, could be felt from where I was in traffic on Mackenzie. I mean, it's like, just kids just so excited to be together, um, and so I just, I'm so thrilled that we were able to do that and just the energy that is going into the school year of, you know, there's a lot of anxiety, I think, too. There's, you know, a lot of kids who weren't in school buildings last year almost at all, but there's also just a lot of excitement. So I was just glad our staff was able to facilitate that. And then at the high school, um, for anyone who doesn't know, on Friday, they're actually doing orientation, not just for ninth graders, but the 10th graders are getting to come and do an orientation as well. And I just really appreciate that, again, as a mom who has a 10th grader who had just such a bizarre school year last year, um, that's going to make a long day for the high school staff to do two orientations like that. And they're even doing an activity fair that the ninth graders get to go to and the 10th graders get to go to because the 10th graders had an activity fair, you know, two years ago at this point, and then didn't get to do very many activities. So I really appreciate the effort being done on that. And I wanted to say, Erica, I just, I mean, in the four years that I've been on this board, I feel like each year your job has just gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. And each time you give us a report, what your influence has just grown, and we're doing this more and this more and this more. And, um, I'm just astonished at everything you accomplish and how much grace you do with it. I really appreciate that the face of the district, you are the one that puts the stamp on that a lot of times, and I feel so confident having you in that role, so thank you for that. And last, I just, last, I just feel like I want to say, I just feel, I have so much just compassion for our our community about the bus issue. And I I trust, I think you said it so well earlier, um, but I just want to say again, um, how much all of us, everyone in this room wishes that we could fix this issue. We want to help drive kids to school, and we want to do it safely. And while it is a nationwide problem, and that needs to be said and understood, that's not really how we tackle things in half. And we don't say, well, it's everybody is having that problem. We really are, want to do everything we can to help our community. So, uh, I just want to say, we we will keep working to make it happen as much as we can and to just encourage people to reach out to your neighbors. Um, you know, I'm talking to people about how can we help get your kids to school, and that's the kind of community that we're in. And so that'll just keep happening. And that's all I've got, so thank you to each of you. And that being said, we are going to move into execs, so I have a very specific motion to make. Motion to adjourn to executive session regarding pursuant personnel to section six one zero point zero two one three and pursuant legal to section six one zero point zero two one one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any question, comment? Okay, roll call them.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes, so we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Oh, thank you.
Pretty sure this was a fun year.
I know, I know, I'm joking.
Is it really?
It's hard to find begins.
Can I help you then?
If you could move that chair to our, where we're going, that would be awesome, thank you.
You bet. Happy to help. Happy to help.
Somebody got, somebody got another special chair. Not just, not just one special.
Yeah, but I think that one is better. I said, I'm this one, and I don't know. I mean, it's, you can try this one.
I love it. Did you see me?
I'm just hurting, I'm hurting anyway right now, but the chair is not okay.
Is that going where we're going? We're going to trade stuff.
Down to our other, yes, I just need to use it. Thank you.